Very well, let's start because we've obviously this is all last minute, we all decided to do that yesterday after the board meeting or during the board meeting.
Listen, we appreciate you coming in at last minute.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. So we have pretty much everybody in attendance, so fantastic. I think we all know each other by now. Um, the idea is to go over where are we right now? And then what do we do to tweak to proceed further? That's really the whole idea. And the special emphasis is on the digital component. Specifically Facebook and Google. And then how are we gonna improve our current capabilities and how are we gonna advertise better? Because we need to have something done already next week to augment online for the digital component, to start aggressively advertising DPS to parents who are about to enroll children. Cause we started our enrollment, our other schools are enrolling. So we're in very dire competition right now and we want those children to come and attend DPS and they need to be convinced that we are a better choice than anybody else. So whether it's charter schools, parochial schools, or it's open enrollment. So we have hundreds of students, almost a thousand students in open enrollment. So.
So I think in in six short months, we've put together quite a lot, quite a bit of new um programs that I think we could feature. We put new CTE programs. I know we haven't had a chance to speak in each of our high schools, so high quality seats that'll lead towards uh college credit. Um, we also started a virtual academy and that'll be great hopefully recruiting some of our kids back from the Ecos of the world. Uh, and and when we polled some kids that we they said that had that been an option, they wouldn't have left us in the first place.
Mm-hmm.
So it's not something that we want to glorify, but it could work for the the child that maybe is in a family where he has to work or she has to work.
I think they can't get to school.
Can't get to school. So you know ultimately the the good thing is they get to graduate with a Dayton Public School diploma. Um, we have already sent out letters for summer school, so we're on top of that. Um, you know, the ideas are out there. We put together flyers. We've put together posters to put in the schools so that when children and parents walk in, it's it's very noticeable that there's a lot of new stuff
Mm-hmm.
and new things that they can uh sign up for and get information for. Um, but now the next thing will be the the marketing, the marketing component.
I would also like to add too that one of the things that DPS offers is um is their athletic department.
Yes.
That um some of the other schools don't, especially the charities.
Yep, athletics, athletics.
Um, and we need to gather information on scholarships. How many, how many students gain scholarships through athletics?
We should do that.
I think that's something that that maybe we should advertise. And I don't know what that number is, hopefully it looks real good.
So. Yeah, no, no.
If not, we'll just leave it alone.
So so I think we should do scholarships overall. We used to do that in another district I was in. Um, but we can, we can break it down into athletics and academics.
Great, great.
Could be fun, then also the organic.
So we may wanna have a conversation with um.
Before.
Right, and they are.
More focus on that.
All right, and the wear slivers is.
But before we go any further, you know, I wanted this to have a lot of structure, so I I personally prepared some notes already overnight.
Okay. Okay.
Uh, I had a series of questions, eight questions, I think. Um.
Mm-hmm, I have some of those documents for you.
Fantastic. If we could go over, I wanted us to establish that certain baseline.
Sounds good.
Uh, number one, Google Analytics about our website, how are we doing in that regard?
These, these are the latest Google Analytics that just came through for the entire month of February.
Okay.
That I received.
Okay, fantastic. And what's this? Oh, thank you.
Um, I have your 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 list of information there. Um, the other things that I was able to get together is um. This is from la- this is from sixteen, what the Omen Group did for us as far as uh spots, billboards, radio goes. This is a media plan.
Okay.
That I can show, that I can show everyone.
Oh, fantastic, okay. Great, great.
It certainly is just an overview of what happened in sixteen.
Yeah.
Not, you know, every, every stat. And then I've I've called up the app to sh- I I it's just easier with the way their stats are set up.
Thank you. Absolutely, absolutely, thank you for doing that.
I've called up the app where we can access the the stats as far as the app goes.
Yes. Yes.
Uh, the other item that I have that I was able to uh get for you is you had requested uh something about a PR plan, a background marketing that we've done.
Mm, mm, mm-hmm.
Um, what I have is from fourth to fourteen, fifteen school year.
Okay, okay, that's good, that's good because it it might just need to be dusted off and updated and that's about it. But so that everybody
Yeah.
benefits from, you know, the the questions that I've asked. Number one was Google Analytics, we got that. Number two were basic stats on the most recent top three Facebook campaigns. Uh, number three were basic stats on our DPS app. And of course, we get those updates on a monthly basis at our Technology Steering Committee, but still I wanted us all to hear that. Uh, number three to have live access to our DPS Facebook account and specifically our ads manager, so we can see some more statistics or answer any particular questions we might have. I've also asked to have access by phone to Upward, which is the website developer.
They are available should we need them?
Great, great, great. Yeah, we don't need them right now, but just in case if there's a need.
Yep, they are aware. Um, the app manager might be a harder deck if they need them on the phone nowadays.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, that was question number six, and that's okay. We can always email those questions and get back to it. It it's a lot of material anyway for the first meeting and uh
Yeah. Right. Right.
And that is something that could be tackled later. It doesn't have to be tackled by any committee or so. It could be just done by you or somebody, whoever the superintendent designates.
Yes. Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Uh, number seven were statistics reports from previous ad buys on Facebook and Google, and you provided that to us.
Yes. Mm-hmm.
And then, you know, eight was the formal marketing, advertising, PR plan and strategy. And of course, we got a copy of that. So thank you very much for, you know, pretty much
You're welcome.
aside from the app developer, we we got essentially everything else. So that's, yeah, thank you, thank you for that.
Thank you, Bill, for that.
You're welcome. Oh, you're welcome.
Then uh, number two, the questions that I've had over, you know, over the past couple of weeks and months. Number one, and this is where the app comes in, is how come we haven't started using the app in terms of pushing various announcements? So the most important reason why we've been promoting this app and why we've had hundreds of people download it is so that we can actually start pushing announcement like, hey, all the app uh holders, we started the enrollment. Or there's a Dunbar game tonight. Or, you know, this and that, you know, everybody does that.
That's true.
Um, or there is a major delay because of weather. So this is something that, and I know we were working on that feature last year, it was something very difficult to do because we have both a global feature for the entire district and then we have specific ones for each school. So but I I think that Ken Kreitzer and his team were able to resolve most of those things. So I I'm wondering where are we standing in that regard?
Let me come back.
And that would be the question to, you know.
Did you guys overlook the Blackboard for this, for the website?
Y- yeah, yeah. The the they did consider it among all the others, but I mean, you know, now it's too late to change to use to a different platform.
Yeah. I like that. Let's ask.
Because the app that they chose, the the is a different provider. And they had some very unique features that uh Blackboard didn't have at the time.
Yeah.
So this would be really an important question for me. Of course, this is not something that's relevant to Omen Group necessarily, but that is something that's more for our IT department and for our media department to find out. Because that's something that, how how many people do we have who downloaded that? Eight hundred?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I know how many people downloaded Here Comes the Bus is six hundred, six hundred and nineteen.
Six hundred, just the Here Comes the Bus, yeah. But the app itself was many more, it was.
Just, just Here Comes the Bus. Yeah, Jill, do you know how many people downloaded the?
Twelve, thirteen hundred people.
Uh, that, that, here, I can do it as far back as all allows. That figures the last thirty days. Uh, so in the last thirty days, we've had hundred twenty-eight downloads, I believe, if I.
Four hundred and twenty-three.
I'm gonna give you a year to date.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
Yeah, she can do the custom range.
I'll do the custom range for you, yeah.
Which is going back to August or actually even before that, we've rolled it out, yeah.
Uh, I can just do, uh, let's just do, uh, July one.
Yeah, let's just do July.
Yeah, uh, July one, we'll do it. Of sixteen, yeah. Oops. Do I have that right? Yeah, in July. No, you wanted zero seven.
I was telling the other way around.
Yeah, you wanted zero seven.
Zero seven, zero.
Yeah, I got it mixed up.
That is a strange way of showing dates.
That's European.
Yeah, it is actually, in a way, yeah.
Yeah, I know, yeah, it's. Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'll I'll look at the data, thank you. Um, and again, thank y'all for being here. I I we had a really good discussion last night uh at the board in terms of processes.
Absolutely, please, please.
Um, with um, you know, with our marketing vendor. So one thing I wanna ask um, ask y'all is in in your business model, um, what is your interaction like with your clients? And I ask that because there was a discussion last night in terms of um, is Omen Group to be reactive? In other words, are they to respond to our request when we bring it to you? Or is your style to be more proactive? In other words, you bring things to us as you see appropriate based upon timelines and recent events and everything else. That was a um, a very hearty discussion, but I would like to know from from y'all, the pros, what is your typical relationship like in that regard? Um, what should we expect?
So if the the short answer to that is there are no typical clients.
Mm-hmm, yes, yes.
They're all special and unique. Um, but we try to, I think the the intelligent way that we answer that, or at least I I believe is intelligent, and and our approach is both.
Right.
So as is evidenced today, we can be really responsive. We were asked to be here a couple hours ago, move some things around, hey, this is important, we'll be there, absolutely.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Uh, so that's a good example of absolutely, we can be responsive. Um, as we talk with stakeholders, as we talk to people within the district or any client, the more we learn about the client, the more we learn about um, not just the sort of baseline, hey, here's what we're trying to do, here are the problems we're trying to solve. But the longer we work, the deeper we go, the more we really understand what's going on, the more able we are to be proactive.
Yes.
So we want, you know, a good, healthy relationship is a give and take.
Right.
You tell us what you need, things change, it's a dynamic world. There's always gonna be a need for us to respond to your needs.
Yes.
We are marketing experts. There's always gonna be a need for us to say, here's something new that might help to solve that problem in a new or better way.
Yes. Right.
Um, what we try to not do is say, here's a cookie cutter templated approach, and so every client, we do exactly this, exactly that, exactly that. Cause it doesn't work to, you know, DPS is a unique entity, uh, and a complicated one.
Right.
Very different from many of the other clients who we work with who are also unique and complicated in that way.
Yes.
So we have to be, we have to take the time, do the due diligence to understand that complexity initially and on in an ongoing fashion.
Absolutely. Um, and to be, Mr. Chairman, if I may, and to be a little um, be a little more specific.
Mm-hmm.
For example, um, um, Morgan Biggerau raised a really good point last night about the fact that we had uh sessions on our new virtual academy. And the attendance, which is common, was um very low, very low with parents, for example. And the question was, um, where, well, you know, where was marketing? Um, did we do our part in letting you know about that? Um, or should you have known about that to to um, to promote it? So what, in a situation like that, where we see that we have low attendance at an event and we wanna, for the sole purpose of marketing something that we have coming up, i.e. the virtual academy, and we would also like to market the info sessions on that.
Mm-hmm.
What is the appropriate way or the normal way, knowing that there are no normal clients, that you would expect us to go about that? And what should we expect from from y'all?
Some, some clients we have weekly meetings with. Here's a specific time that we're going to meet and we're going to explore. What are the needs, things like we wouldn't know the numbers on sessions unless you all share those with us.
Absolutely.
So that may be a great place to start is here's what we're gonna do and as as we continue to go down that process, it may change.
Right.
We may not need a weekly meeting, we may be able to move to a once a month meeting. But you know, in the beginning, we we are, we all are at a learning curve as to how to get this up and running.
Right, absolutely.
Um, we do need access to stakeholders and we need, when we've asked to to try and grab people to get together and move forward.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Um, we did ask for a few things on the website, um, to be, to help us to understand more about the backend and what we would need in moving forward.
Yes. Absolutely.
That was a discussion we had last week.
And and perfect. And last thing, Mr. Chairman, if I may, and I apologize, I've gotta go to work um soon, so I have limited time.
Yes, please.
Um, it it would be unfair for me to get frustrated in the future if you didn't know my expectations on the front end. Um, so one thing that I would ask as one member of the board, not speaking for the whole board, obviously. One thing that I would expect is that any vendor, whether marketing or not, um, they be proactive instead of reactive. So if you need meetings once every week, I would like you to voice that, voice that need.
That would be a great start.
In in, absolutely, instead of, instead of us um, us coming to y'all. If there's something you need to do to be at optimum performance for us, we need to know that. Because, you know, these ladies, we we work them hard and they're running around a million miles an hour. And if if we're paying y'all to do our marketing, then I I wanna get the value out of every dollar. And so if you need something, we, you need to make that known to us. So that's, that's my expectation moving forward. Again, I say that because it would be unfair for me to get frustrated with you six months or a year from now if you didn't know my expectations.
Yes, I I think we share that same expectation.
Right.
So that, that, you know, you can't pick up one side of the stick without picking up the other. So I think if if there is something needed from us, we're going to expect
Bingo, you got it.
that will be voiced as well and we will, you know, and I don't think, we don't ever wanna be reactive.
Yes.
I take no, no shame in saying we are always gonna be responsive and proactive, so I think we wanna be both.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
I agree.
And I, and I hold, I hold my own employees um to that same standard, contract or not. And Dr. Burton, you know that, and Superintendent, you know that.
Yeah.
I hold them to that same standard. Be responsive, be proactive, don't be reactive.
Without doubt.
So I want y'all to know that I'm not, I'm not treating y'all any differently than I treat any of my employees. I'm treating everybody the same. And these ladies can attest to that. So, thank you. And thank you, thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Mathis. Uh, those were good comments and I can say that you were speaking not only for yourself, but for me too, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Wonderful, thanks.
Thank you for saving uh me some time for reiterating this. Um. And I, and I wanted to go for, you know, through a few more of these technical questions before we get to a more general discussion so that we all um, so that we all can make some progress in in a shortest amount of time. Um, is there anything that prevents us from using the exterior walls of our buildings, specifically our schools? And to have giant posters on them, like massive.
Uh, my other thought was the side of the buses.
Uh, we can't do that, that's where the law prevents us.
Oh, we can't do that?
No, I've already looked into that last year, yeah.
Can't do that. Well. Even the windows like the?
No, we can't, yeah. Unfortunately, Ohio doesn't allow it. Trust me, we've looked into it, yeah.
Not able to. Okay.
Yeah.
I had Gillian actually research that.
We can all put flags on the side of our cars then as we drive through the city.
But but uh the building, nothing prevents us from what I know. And so.
I don't think so.
It needs to be like especially downtown, has to be approved before they go up.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. But there's no law that prevents us from doing that.
Um. They have to approve.
Yeah, they, we have to get a permit for that.
And it's not, and right, and sometimes you'll want window clings.
Exactly. Mm-hmm.
That's what I want.
From the inside.
That's right.
And sometimes you'll want banner signs outside.
Exactly, exactly.
Probably better in certain areas to have window clings that are inside the building.
I know, the community room.
It also gives privacy to the people inside the building where windows are open so that they can work.
Sure. Sure, sure.
So those are all things that need changed, um, city, you know, area by area.
It, it, and just to be specific, I don't wanna cover up anybody's windows. I'm talking about maybe the side walls.
Well, you can see through, you can see through.
You mean the rear?
Well, I know, but I'm talking about side walls that don't have any windows. We have many schools which have, you know, opponents, for example.
Ludlow windows, right.
You drive by, there are, there are certain walls that don't have any windows, side doors.
But but you could do large format graphics there, but you still have to have permission to been through this with the city.
We're.
Exactly, exactly, large format graphics. Yes, yes, yeah, oh, of course, of course, of course, of course.
And it has to go, they have a whole process.
We know that, we know that, but it's not prohibited by the ORC, that's the most important. Like with the buses, it doesn't matter. You can get a permit, but you still can't do it.
Yeah. Right, you can't do it.
So we've been hanging banners congratulating, congratulating separate schools based on their A plus rating.
Yeah, okay.
And those have been going down, are they up yet?
They're in the process, I don't know if they're complete yet, but they're in the process.
Okay. So every school that has an A plus rating, they're getting a banner outside their school.
Yeah. Fantastic. This is the type of stuff that I'm talking about, okay, okay.
But we, we did that, yeah. Yeah, it's, it, they've been on order.
So could we go?
Oh, in a while.
If they're not up, they should be.
They should be up any day now, okay.
Could we speed this up, become a little bit more aggressive, make sure that they're even larger, that that graphics? That we utilize all the space that we have on all those walls to make it as giant as possible so that everybody notices. Because it's certainly cheaper to do that than to rent a billboard. Cause this is a one-time expensive, it'll last us the entire.
How much was the billboard?
It depends whether it's a bulletin or it's a thirty sheet or it's an A sheet.
Exactly.
Now, in terms of the building, you may wanna make sure if you've ordered them, they have slats in them so wind doesn't damage them.
Oh, that's true, those little holes, yeah.
Because that can be a problem if they're not, and and immediately you, they're not, you're, they're not liable, but that goes not liable.
They're, they're done, they should be punched.
It's like, it is, but it's like a punch curve or ramp, yeah.
It is, it's like kind of a right ramp, yeah.
Let's check on that, let's check, make sure that conforms to that and, you know, and in general, perhaps we can then make sure that we let know the Omen Group
Thank you for that, come on.
in the future before we order something like that, so it's all kinda better coordinated.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah. Well, this, we started this before the RFQ was finished. We just, we wanted to
Yeah, I know, I know, I know. Yeah, yeah.
To start putting some positive things out there so that the.
Of course, of course, yeah, I'm not being critical, I'm just saying in general, going forward.
Yeah, the community can see. Sure, oh, absolutely.
Oh, we should all go through them.
Okay, all right. Then, um, individual websites, if you go to any individual website of our school, let's say Belmont, but let's say Kaiser, whatever.
Yeah. Each school. Yeah, that needs to be better.
They need to be better, but they also should have special messages and announcements. So go to any one of the school, yeah.
Such as the new schools. Go, go, go to uh like Dunbar.
Yeah, go to any school.
Cause there's athletics, like the game tonight.
There you go, so, yeah, there's a game tonight, but you wouldn't know this. You wouldn't know this from looking here. It should have a s- some kind of scrolling.
Nine thirty, right. Come support Dunbar.
Something at the very top, you know.
What, are they the regionals or?
Yeah.
I forget what the, what level they're at.
Something, something.
Yeah, nine thirty P M game.
It should announce that, that it should be changed, it should be the principal's responsibility to change that or coordinate the change every day.
So, the principal's responsibility? What if they, what if they don't have the?
No. No, it was decided, the the way it is set up right now, the only person that has access to any kind of content on any page on the website
That's not what I'm saying.
is me.
Absolutely, they have to do it through you, but it's their responsibility to alert you and give you the wording and the information.
To get you all in. That makes sense.
Obviously, only one person gets to log in and change it technically, yeah.
Correct. Correct, I need to be fed that information, right, correct.
Yes, yeah, but it should be the principal, they're their CEO of the building, as we say. It should be their responsibility
Yes. I agree.
to alert. It shouldn't be the superintendent asking them every day, hey, do you have something new coming up?
Well, we do, I do ask them to let me know so I can like, that's the way I am because I'm going to the Dunbar game tonight.
Right? Oh, I'm sure you do, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, and I've reached out several times going for website content.
Does that make sense?
I'm getting the CTE programs.
Oh, yes, that's right.
Okay.
So I will get you all the CTE programs for each school and that way we can put that on each school's webpage.
Mm-hmm.
We can add those to them right, we can do that right away.
Right, like, uh, you know, and and we're trying to, uh, the 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 way we've thought about marketing and I'm, I'm not the expert, you are.
Right.
But it was before you came and we did the best we could, was uh reserve your spot now.
Mm-hmm.
We, we wanna put it in a positive light that, you know, this is a unique opportunity.
It's.
Hurry up, jump on board. The new DPS.
Mm-hmm, that makes sense.
So if you, if there's a better way, please, by all means, you know, give us feedback.
Then, yeah, please.
I, if I may comment, I think one of the areas too that we might be lacking is that I think that the schools need to take responsibility for some of the schools. Such as, um, my neighbor goes two horse man.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't think they're getting any kind of sales pitch on what our different high schools are offering.
Mm-hmm.
And so I even have some neighbors that are talking Kettering schools. And because of the open enrollment and I'm like, oh, no, you have to come, you know, so I think
So a high school fair.
That, well, even just in the hi- it doesn't necessarily have to be a fair.
But it could be a fair of all of our schools featuring, I've I've done it in other districts, all of our schools.
Because. Right, I mean, we, we can do that.
On a Saturday and then parents can come and they can go to the table.
We can do that, but actually I think that the students need to be receiving information, someone coming out, I mean, this is like internal stuff.
Oh, I agree with you.
What Board Member Taylor is saying.
Coming out talking to them, so that the parent doesn't have to go somewhere with the child, but the child takes something home to the parents.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And and in general, to update neighborhoods, neighborhoods.
And it's free.
So not to rely on just town halls where they have to come to us because they just don't come that often in that large numbers.
Absolutely.
As opposed to us going to them, so it's, so it's that kinda reverse position.
Yeah. So that should be done that way. I believe in student panels too, bringing former like chorus man students back from different high schools and talk about their experiences
Yeah. Both should be done, both.
to try to sell the schools. Um, but also a uh, a high s- a a fair with our schools.
Mm-hmm.
And they all have to set up, they all have to come and and be able to talk to parents and prospective, um, families about their school.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, mm-hmm. That makes, that that makes sense, yeah.
And they have candy there and takeaways and contests and T-shirt giveaways and things like that to try to build up the momentum.
Mm-hmm. And so. In that context, I wanted to ask, how about we do an alumni summit? We've never done that. Getting together as many alumnis as possible, actually creating a database and getting, which we've been talking about for a while.
Yeah.
And going and actually setting a date, getting everybody in May or something like that. Or for graduation, inviting them all into a special section and celebrate them as well.
I talked to the lady who was working on the alumni, and I think another interesting strategy may be, there's lots of people having reunions.
Mm-hmm.
And you can grab those on, on, on the website.
Yes, yes.
And I think that you need to, we need to reach out to those people. They're happening every summer and that's a great place. It's a great place to raise money.
Yes. Exactly.
Bring them back.
You got it.
It, it's, it's a great place for a lot of reasons. There's lots of success stories here.
Oh, yeah.
And one of us spoke to testimonials, the power of testimonials are huge. We have wonderful stories.
Yes. Yes, yeah.
It's just netting those out and finding them.
That's right, that's right, yeah.
We got them.
Okay.
We have to sell ourselves. And like you talked about, you know, some of the, some of the principals, because we're public, they they rest on their laurels.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
That, though they're always gonna come to our school. No, it's a com- we live in a competitive age now.
Oh, yeah.
So I agree with you, Ms. Taylor, a hundred percent, that we have to sell ourselves. And when I talked to principals, I said, you know, we have this natural habit of, when we go to the hairdresser, the barber, of telling the worst possible story that happened that day.
Mm-hmm.
I said, stop it, all it does is perpetuate the negative stereotypes. And we have to start talking about the good things that are going on in the schools. I met, I was at urgent care this morning because of all of this going on, allergies. And the the lady waiting on me, she knew who I was, and she said her son attends a charter school. And I said, well, what would it take for us to bring him back to the DPS? And she goes, well, what do you have to offer? So I started telling her, and she said, I'll think about that. But if every one of us took the time to have those conversations.
Yes, exactly.
But that may be something that we can do internally, to to rally our own troops inside and not do mass media.
Sure.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Marketing.
Cause they're, they're on, they're on front, on frontline.
I had.
Exactly.
I had a central office, they call it a Ludlow meeting. I had a central office meeting last week, a week and a half ago.
No, we didn't.
You're taking them out of marketing.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And that's the exact message that was conveyed. And I had them all repeat after me, we've always done it this way. And they said, we've always done it this way. And I said, now don't ever say that again. And they laughed, but it's, it's true.
Mm-hmm.
It's true.
We have to think about things differently, think outside the box, work together, the collaboration is very important. Get away from finger pointing and blaming and we just, we have to come together.
So, so who can work on this specifically, alumni alumni reunion? Who can be in charge of this?
So then we have to get to the database.
If I may, I know that uh DPS Foundation is working with IT presently to um get that list together.
Yeah, yes.
Yes, they are.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
So I'd like to know how far they've gotten on that already.
Yeah.
The scenery and.
Okay, you can update us later.
Yeah, that would be. That ball, that ball's already rolling.
Okay, fantastic.
Yeah, yeah.
And if somebody wants to scour classmates and find out when those reunions are all coming up and be a part of this.
Yeah. Yes, 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 yes.
Yes.
And in the same.
So let's think about, let's think about who's on their twenty year, twenty five year, thirty year, where it's gonna be.
Yeah. In the same context, what about all the PTAs at schools, at every individual school? Why do they just get together to just discuss local problems within or issues within a particular school? Why don't we use that as a medium to, hey, do you know the latest and greatest going on at DPS? Can you help us recruit more students? Do you know Johnny and Sarah to bring them back?
We do have parent liaisons at each school.
Yeah, we do. And we pay them a certain stipend, five hundred or one thousand dollars, something like that, so.
Right. I don't know here.
Who coordinates all that?
And are they taking that information back?
Exactly, exactly.
Uh, who coordinates that is um, Phyllis, yeah.
Is it Phyllis? Okay. So could we have a meeting with Phyllis to reinforce what needs to be done in that regard, to structure her work better?
Yes.
And not to mention, if I may, before I leave, I'm so sorry, I apologize.
Yeah.
Um, each board member is also a member of a local priority board, so that covers the neighborhoods. Um, I know, for example, Northwest Priority Board with Mr. Greer, Reverend Greer, um, does a phenomenal job of getting in touch with the community, bringing them for community festivals, things like that. I think that would be another good neighborhood resource, as long as each board member's already a liaison with each of these priority boards.
Yeah.
Um, we could think about that too in terms of neighborhood.
Sure, sure. They don't will attend them though.
No, they're not. But they, but they have a very good um neighborhood infrastructure that I think if it was activated, could be beneficial.
Sure, sure.
Um, especially some of them. So amid that, I must depart, but I, um, and just thank you to our guests and staff, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, thank you for your participation.
Safe travels.
And if I may, um, call one of both y'all tonight to get an update on it, I love it, sure, thank you, and thank you, Jerry.
And then, thank you very much, and then in that same context, what about all the partner organizations, like yesterday we got a packet of all the partner organizations that every single school has.
You got it, thank you, sir, I may.
Okay. We got this great school, mm-hmm.
It's an updated one, we've had it for years, obviously, and some schools have, let's say, just one Costco, Lowe's. And then others have twenty, thirty smaller organizations, yeah. That that's a separate problem, but what do we do about updating all those partner organizations, especially many of them are churches and nonprofits? So, it's not a large corporation like a Costco where it's hard to really have such a conversation, but what about all the churches and nonprofits?
So, so what do you wanna do as far as leverage them, so so if I.
I want them to know about, because I don't think they know about what's going on at DPS, they just, they're just partners of, okay, I'm partner of Kaiser and I need to help Kaiser to do this uh festival in May.
Oh, I'll need to, okay. They don't know everything else, to be accurate, so, so maybe, I mean.
Exactly, exactly, beyond Kaiser, or even, they don't even have the task of bringing students back to Kaiser.
So, maybe we meet with all of them, yeah.
So, it's the same thing as P T A and, yeah, let's do a summit, summit of all those appreciation day of all the organizations.
Sure. And and what I, the message I wanna convey, and and if, you know, if if the board members agree, is that it was something that we said in Indianapolis, go a big, come bigger, come bigger, go home.
Yeah.
And it's not about money, it's not, you know, that like the Lily Lily Foundation, it's not necessarily come with a lot of money, but come big with a commitment.
Mm-hmm.
It could be personnel to come out and read to the kids, that help teachers.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it it, you know, something significant that that would would make a profound difference, but the more people that are in the know about all the new things going on in the new Dayton Public Schools. The the better that we have opportunities to market what's going on, so the children now have choices in high school.
Mm-hmm.
It's not the good old days where they just get to sit in rows and some of them want to honors college, take it or leave it.
Take it or leave, yeah.
Now they can actually graduate a a a good career and take that and start work right away, and we even use student surveys.
Mm-hmm, 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 mm-hmm.
Or they can use that to leverage that to go to college.
Yeah. And.
Which is a very, very unique for a public district, not many districts offer that.
Sure. So, what do you think, superintendent, what can we do in this regard?
As far as.
How can we summon all of these partner organizations to one spot and do, you know, celebrate them?
Yeah. I think we need to leverage our principals because they'll know the context, you know, what do you think?
And then do some training for them.
So, I think we're doing, I think we have a uh, we need a communication strategy.
Or do you have a contact list?
Mm-hmm.
That then we tell the principals, here are the steps, here's the process, okay, here are, these are your partners.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
But if we leave it to them just to communicate, I don't know how that will go.
No, of course, no, 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 I know even asking for that, yeah.
No, it's gonna be organized, yeah.
But if, yeah, if we have organized.
Well, I'm getting a Google Doc, you know, but not everybody knows how to use them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, it has to be centrally managed.
Yeah, but if we had an organized strategy, we bring all the principals in and tell them with the marketing group, this is how you're gonna market your building, here are some things that you do.
A Google Doc, awesome.
Yeah. Yeah.
And then here are the people you're gonna market to, you already have the people you're marketing to, I just don't know how.
But if we wanna call a summit, if we wanna call a summit, that's why I think on a Google Doc.
But before that, I would like a summit, I want them all in one place.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
So, we would, so I think, this is just what I'm thinking out loud, so we already have the sheet of all of the organizations that we handed the board.
Yeah. Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So, we can just uh fill out in advance Kaiser has Costco, whatever, I don't know, whoever they have.
Exactly, exactly, whoever, yeah.
In advance, contact person, phone number.
Exactly.
Then then the principals can fill that out, because they should have that information.
Exactly, and invite them.
Principal's with it, principal's with that now.
Right, principal should have that, so a Google Doc, send it out to all of the principals, we get it back, and then we could share it with with the Omen group and the board and with uh Mr. Reese so that we can organize that meeting.
Yeah. And come up with a date soon and get that meeting soon.
It needs to be um invitation by the superintendent and the principal, so that like each one is is separate, so that everybody who's gone.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yeah, exactly.
They're all in it together.
It has to be high level, yeah.
Supports Kaiser, I would say that that needs to be, their invitation needs to be from the superintendent and the principal and individual.
That's a great idea, Ms. Taylor.
Because then the principal gives a personal name, more of a personal name to it, but it shows that it's bigger and.
Yeah, correct, so a reception, a reception, and then the principal from Kaiser would know who her people or his people are, they can greet them and then we can do a.
Yeah. Yeah.
In in that room that we get a.
And a meet and greet.
So, cause we do it at the end of the year, but we do it with more of the district wide partners more so than the building partners that do it every year. So, now this is expanding that, so it's principals that are like one people, not the district wide people that are like.
I think I think what you're saying is that we both invite, so I would sign off and they would sign off, but when people came in.
Just before Julian.
We would want each principal from each building to be there to greet their constituents, cause they have a, they should have that relationship already, whereas I I'll know some of them, but I won't know all of them.
Right, so so I guess, and then when they come to this partnership summit, what's gonna happen? That's the next thing.
Then we we need to come up with that, of course, but we need to train them, we really need to, well, appreciate them, express our thanks and appreciation.
That's what I'm.
A girlfriend, what's gonna happen, well.
Yes. Where.
But it can't stop with that, and we can't be just back batting and back slapping each other, then we have to say, okay, here's some training.
Like Obama.
Okay, this is what you need to do every day, you need to bring us back more people, this will revitalize neighborhoods and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
We have. And and give them, we can give them five different things that they can do to help us advertise.
Yes, yeah.
Or that they can volunteer for.
And.
Yes, and actualism, what they can do, yeah, ways to help.
Ways to help, right.
And 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 provide them information about Dayton Public Schools.
Exactly, exactly.
And and I was just gonna say, so maybe like where we've been.
Yes.
And where where we're going.
So, last summer, last summer, we did that fact sheet for the business community and so on, we need to update that, but create us something different for.
Something along those lines. Yes. Yeah, fact sheet, yeah. More exciting.
For these individuals, yeah, it needs to be something more exciting, it has to have a little bit more academics, but also accountability, technology and so on.
Yeah. It has to be sexy.
Yeah, it has to be, jazz, yeah, yeah, there, so, yeah.
It has to be jazz, yeah, better work.
So, at this summit, let me see if I'm, I'm just taking notes on there, at the summit we're gonna.
You know, it just, it has to grab your attention, it can't be the same old, same old.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, at this summit, we're gonna express appreciation, we're gonna do some training, we're gonna share information, we're gonna share some advertising strategies of way um ways to help where we have been and where we're going.
Yeah. Yes, to bring up enrollment.
And also to give them ideas for maybe how they can get their employees more involved, such as like, do we need to, children and that kind of.
Mm.
Right, raising children.
And we have to give them handouts, a one pager should be, what do we expect in terms of, not expect, but what do we want in terms of an action plan, and number two, a fact sheet about DPS. The latest and greatest achievements of DPS.
Right, so part of that, and and a lot of people feel intimidated because they feel like they don't know how to come in and volunteer, so part of that might be, we have to do some training.
Do we have that now well organized, because that was had been an issue for years, that if you wanted to volunteer for Dayton Public Schools, it was almost like.
No. No, but I'd like to organize it. Oh, you have to pay, you have to get fingerprinted and background checked.
Big time, well, no, I'm talking about your contact, to your contact person.
Really? Really?
How how do you contact Dayton Public Schools, if I wanted to volunteer for Dayton Public Schools, who do I contact, and where does it go, and who gets it? And is it through the particular school, or is it through the, right, and that's been a big issue for a long time.
So, because I mean, we're being paid, so it it's a personnel issue, that that person is no longer with the district, but they, I'll I'll tell you more off on.
Okay, alright.
That there was somebody that was given that charge, I just, I can't say the name.
So, can I go onto the website for DPS and hit volunteer, and then boom, I get all my information?
Okay.
So, you can, you can, you can hit volunteer and apply.
Could we, could we, where is it?
You can fill out the form.
What this is pretending to say is that afterwards, you submit all that information, but where does it go from there?
Right.
So, then who contacts you to say, I got your application, thanks for your interest, here's some places where you can go, here's some training.
And so where do we volunteer?
You mean, no one responded?
Yeah, so it's hard already.
You would go, okay.
Volunteering is there, but it.
Volunteer pop, and then you would go to volunteering.
It has to be one button at the very top, at the very, you know, the whole page, yeah, volunteer.
At the top up here, you see, yeah, that stands out, volunteer, right.
And then you, there's the form and the guy, the rings and all, that stuff is there.
Yeah, and the form is a PDF form, it's not an online form, it's not a submission form, is it?
Uh, I believe this one is.
So, you're saying, so, figure out ways.
Oh, it is a submission form, good, very good, very good.
This one actually is a, this one is a submission form.
Oh, good.
And then that goes to somebody.
Okay. And whom does it go to, yeah.
Okay, right now, so it used to go to someone who's supposed to do all that, but that does not exist right now.
Okay. Okay, so that needs to be assigned to somebody right now, ASAP.
Okay, thank you very much. Correct, we're in the process of moving some folks around.
Okay. And let's put the button, if we can write that down for the upwards, so they can put a, squeeze a button somewhere there in a different color, colorful, you know, volunteer. And big letters, yeah, yeah, flash of something.
Make it flash or something.
Well, I do have something in mind for that.
Do you want some kind of availability down in this area, we can make it into a volunteer?
No, no, it has to be seen up up there, because no one scrolls.
We can have it added here?
It could be right where printable.
Quick link.
I think that should be a.
Quick link or.
It could be quick links or where printable calendar is.
It should be a quick. I can have it made as a quick link.
Cause why do we have printable calendar and then calendar, why do we have two of those?
Where are you seeing, um, because this is just, we had some requests to get a quick, get quick, quick access to something people can print.
Okay. Okay, well, you see, yeah.
So, that that opens that up, and then the calendar is the actual website.
Yeah, so that could be streamlined and the printable calendar can be within, exactly, it could be right there, yeah.
And then you can also. You can do that here as well.
And then why do we have contact us at the top when everybody knows that it's always at the bottom as well, you see, right there?
Contact us?
Yeah, so you can put volunteer instead of contact us.
We can do that.
Because contact us is at the very bottom, so there is.
Yeah, it's it's at both ends.
Yeah, yeah.
That's to gear off, so if one of the things I was just talking here, one of the things for the Omen group are you envisioning that, one of the things they'll look and give us, um, critically look at our website.
Sure, to improve the website, yeah.
Feedback, yes.
Give us some really good feedback on having proven it.
Right now it's very heavy with information, it's not a bad website, but it's just very hard to find stuff.
Yes.
It's it's hard to find things.
Yes.
And the backend needs more weight that we can tell where things came from.
Yeah. Definitely, definitely, definitely.
Which is something we spoke on terms of how to tell us and some other things that needs to be added.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, 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 thank you. And then again, in that same context, what about the Office of Males of Color, they have staff and mentors, right, how many staff members?
They created their own webpage.
Five plus, they have mentors who have signed up, why can't they also have the same training that we're planning for the uh organizational leaders, P T As and alumnis?
They can.
Eh, because they're going out to the community every day, that's their job, right, the five people plus the mentors, why, why do they only deal with, let's say, problems?
Mm-hmm, they can do, we can do that.
Let them deal with problems plus, well, mentoring somebody who's about to drop out or whatever, instead of just doing that.
Mm-hmm.
Let's make sure that they also spend, I don't know, twenty percent of their time on recruiting people, recruiting kids, yeah, almost like recruiters, twenty percent.
So, almost like recruiters, I'm gonna say, ma- males of color plus recruiters.
Exactly, yeah, because they go out into the community anyway.
This.
So, another district I know, they hired two recruit, four recruiters this year, and for the first time, they saw an up suite in their enrollment.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, I believe, I know that district, yes, yes.
So, use them.
You know that, so they.
So, use them what, t- uh eighty percent as to help intervening, twenty percent as recruiting them?
Yeah, eighty percent their usual job, and then twenty percent.
But our parent, I think our parents can do that too. Cool.
Well, they should.
Like our parent groups, everybody, our teachers.
I, I, but this should be complimentary.
Our central office, oh, we should all be recruiting.
Yes, exactly, exactly, exactly.
This happens.
I think, I think one of the challenges is that, um, cause those guys are directly in the community, so you wanna go into the community where you see kids going to charter, so.
Yeah. Exactly.
Some of our staff members wouldn't be exposed to kids that are going to charters, or kids are at the local uh stores, kids are at the local church.
Exactly. Exactly. Exactly, they know where we're at, yeah, yeah.
And these guys know those people, so they can go into those areas and get them.
They know.
Exactly.
The male collar, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Office of Males of Color.
Now, are they recruiting mentors, if that part of their job?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah, and those mentors should be given.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, and the relationship of the cities improves, cultural relationships, especially.
It's a good thing.
Yes, and really, and.
Just an eye on neighborhood.
Right.
And mentors should be given that same training too, mentors should be recruiting for DPS as well, they shouldn't be just mentoring existing students, they should be mentoring potential future students, that's what should be done, right?
If that's.
Well, and and with this, all the CTE programs, you know, children that are struggling in the online academy.
Exact. Mm-hmm. Are we getting to all that, this is this page, by the way, I haven't.
But they, but they need to have, they need to be armed with that knowledge to be able to share with their mentor.
Mm-hmm. Yes, yeah, oh, absolutely, absolutely, that's what I'm saying, we have to prepare a couple of fact sheets for that, yeah.
And parent employers and principals and.
Kind of like the universities do when they set up school and the page.
Right, right.
With all the, this big details, what's your C T, what's this, what's that?
Yeah, I don't know, yeah, if you'll.
Yeah, well.
Okay.
Like, so.
How you parent college credit?
What the population look like last year?
And then the next piece would be the parent information session, so we also need to recruit through our parents. Parents need to know that these options are available, because some kids don't always bring that information home. So, we wanna make sure that the parents and the greater community, perhaps through marketing, it can be through a town hall, it can be a couple of different ways. That the parents are armed with all this information.
I think that where you get the the largest portion of parents attending are at sports events.
Yes.
Now, when you're at a sports event, so we we may have a town hall meeting and get twenty five parents, and then the D P S staff.
Dunbar tonight.
Yes.
We think I'll add a Jumbo Stream?
I'm getting to that, I've already thought that.
So, if you go to, if you go to uh a sports event, you see, there are a lot, so how do you leverage that?
Yeah, that's my question. That's all right.
Use that resource, cause you have a captive audience, like tonight, anytime there is a major sports event.
Like on Jumbo Stream tonight, Ken Cracker will be.
Right, do Jumbo Streams, you could do booths there set up for questions and there's lots of interaction you would do.
It's called Ken. Is it too late to get something on the Jumbo Stream?
Tonight?
But tonight, probably.
What would we put on the Jumbo Stream, we have to come up with.
Just about en- enrollment, exciting opportunities, something uh.
What takes place at halftime at the Dunbar game?
In enrollment.
Good question, I can.
This is run by OSHA, so they're in the regionals or districts, I I I forget what, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah. So, yeah, cause it's a tournament game, it's not a traditional game.
Right, right.
But we should utilize sports events much more, we are not utilizing them at all, essentially, that's a huge omission, yeah.
Should be all right. Yeah, be much strategic. That's what Dr. uh, the Roundtree kept getting to.
Yeah, yeah, and then same thing with DPS TV board meetings. We mostly show just our boring faces, which nobody really wants to see, right, and then secondly, yeah, well, no, thank you for doing that, thank you, I'd rather watch kids than us, you know, myself.
That's why I'm trying, let kids in. Me too.
But then secondly, we we look, or we show PowerPoint presentations. But how about during certain periods, putting something else on the screen, as we're talking, we don't necessarily have to see a talking head constantly, we can have a special message.
Like a flash?
Like a flash for a few seconds that.
Did you know?
Exactly, some kind of digital, or it could be a small scrolling thing, and just like CNN has and everybody else have, you know.
Congratulations, you're a student of the athlete of the weekend, probably. Or on the S N B C.
While we're talking, to have a scrolling ticker with messages, all kinds of message, did you know that we are a, you know, invaluable at it? Did you know we are five star rated, did you know that, did you know the C T E, yeah, did you know at Belmont, this is the C T E we have?
It's a good idea.
And then just constantly have that, because we're wasting a lot of opportunity, hundreds of people are watching it, actually, I'm surprised, you know, surprised, yeah.
And people watch that. That's a good idea.
Yeah, it's an easy, it's an easy big picture.
Me too.
It's an easy thing to do, it's a very easy thing to do, our opponents' guys can fix that and do that very quickly.
They can, that's.
Those nights I can't fall asleep, but I I turn it on and, yeah, I'll quit it.
So. Oh, you have, really, oh my god, please.
Can I, I mean, I I I know, I I I'm gonna need to leave because I have an appointment, but I have an appointment, yeah, so if I if I can, uh, thank you.
Board member, yeah, board member.
Oh, yeah, hard. Oh.
Yeah, yes, 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 and and she let us know when.
I, one of the things that that this doesn't have to do so much with the ver- the. Digital, okay, but the um, one one of the things that that we're in crisis on right now is that we're enrolling students.
The digital, yeah.
And I'm receiving in the mail advertisements from other schools.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, from Dayton Christian and from some of the Catholic schools, so I think that that, that that's something that maybe we need to.
We want, we want to jump out of class.
Also, our early childhood um is is, we we need to advertise getting those four-year-olds in our early childhoods. Because we're growing, I don't know if they're filled, I don't know where we're at with that, and we just, but but that's a, that that's a, that's a, that's a big, a big issue.
Oh, no. Yeah, we just started a month.
But if we do the C, the C T C and the early childhood, you know, that's high school and that's, you know, and then feeling wherever.
Mm-hmm.
But um but I'm really concerned about that, okay?
I agree.
Thank you, and one of, thank you very much for this, let me know next meeting.
Thank you very much.
And Wes was the former ex- like a theater in a sub.
Okay, okay.
Unless you're gonna finish it all today.
So, we just need, they need to.
We'll see, we'll see, we'll see, we have second part with Dr. Roundtree and Mr. Lee, which would be, you know, how to invite them, so.
Okay, so, we just need to, you just need to tell me how to put that in, so I can advertise that, so, the other, the other challenge, okay.
Or somewhat traditional.
I'm going to chair that.
I hope not.
The other challenge is that, uh. So, we're, we decided that this year about laptops, if you come right enroll groups, right, we're gonna give you coupons, but this is our challenge.
Because this is an. I wanted to do that. Presidents with Moscow.
You're just, you're just a digital. Everybody who's coming to enroll now, you need to know, all of my early enrollers are people who are enrolled, I can get about.
So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, board member.
And I can see people there.
Take me a sec.
So, like Monday I had a hundred and thirty four people came in to enroll, and the hundred and thirty four, a hundred and twenty one of them enrolled, right?
Mm-hmm.
But but a bulk of them, if they weren't preschoolers, enrolled for the purpose of getting their letter to send in for vouchers. Cause that's my group that comes between now and the end of the month, cause they have a time period, but we said, submit that to the state. So, that's why I thought if we did, starting in April, if you come in and enroll between April and June, and you're here September thirtieth. You your name will be put in a hat for laptop, I got Cincinnati Dell to donate four laptops.
Fantastic.
I was afraid to just say, if you come in and roll, your name gets pulled, because they may not be here.
Great idea.
Right, there there's a statute that Julian sent to us that says that's illegal.
Yeah. Really?
That you can't.
Because it's a law.
We need to have so many staff people do that.
You can't do that, you have to think outside of a lottery.
So, what's.
Yeah.
Chance consideration, prize, you can't.
Thank you so much.
The way of proposing doing it is.
So, we're proposing doing it. So, we can do it, but we just have to do it differently, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and other people are, should, you're gonna have to open it up for male responses, male ones, and people who want to, can't just.
Right. Much more. Okay, we'll figure it out.
Yeah, let's find out what's what's allowable under the law, so that it's legal, of course, yeah.
Yeah, we'll figure out a way to do that. Yeah, if you could help us figure out a way to do it, but our goal is to get people to come in and not wait until July. I have maybe fifteen hundred people who wait, we are open all year long, and then I get. And then I get fifteen hundred people who come in between July and the first day of school.
Helps, hurts with staffing, you, you just everything is a surprise instead of planning services.
And we don't know anything, yes. Yeah, so if you could help us figure out a marketing strategy to make enrollment constant throughout the entire year.
Oh, did I kill that?
But particularly, um, we know we're gonna have an increase when we roll over to the new year, our new year uses such that first Monday in March. And how can we make sure that parents are coming in from that first Monday in March for the next year, right? That first Monday in March up until school starts and they're not waiting until the last Monday. That's, I think that's what Board Member Taylor was trying to get to, because other districts send out mailings and you get all that ahead of time in there. Sexy or attractive mailings and the superintendent said, so how do we do that and get our parents to come in?
Yeah, it's already there.
And now it's the last.
Well, don't have the back.
You can just choose it. No, you, you do, you can just, yeah, there you go.
There you go.
Fantastic.
Right, and then how do we reward them for that?
How do you.
So I just thought the lap, if the laptops are up, I get that, but how do we reward those who come in early?
Okay, so while we, let's figure that out, how we can do that. In line of what actually Board Member Taylor said and we had some other, um, questions. Did we start tracking down students who went to charters and open enrollment, enroll to a school?
So through the virtual academy, that's what they do?
Left DPS.
They do that for us.
I know, that's just the virtual academy.
Okay.
But what about all the others? We've been talking about it for a long time and we've been trying to do that for some time.
So that's some. I would need to get with Marquet on that one because, so it has to do even for graduation purposes, because dirty data in is dirty data out. When a child enrolls as a freshman, they become that, part of that four-year cohort. So if, if Sheila Burton signs up and she's a senior this year, four years ago, she signed up, but she dropped out of her sophomore year.
Mm-hmm.
If they didn't put the right code in.
Mm-hmm.
Or is she just left, but then we have to find out that she ended up at what school.
But this is different, this is graduation, I know that, this problem is about graduation, yeah.
Probably. I, I know. Oh, okay. Well, I'm just getting it next.
Now, I'm talking about even elementary and middle schools. I'm talking about, we have huge mobility in this district. We have a lot of students who come and then leave the next year and then come back or never come back and whatever.
So they're, they're, principals are supposed to do exit interviews, nobody should leave a building without an exit interview.
Yes. That's a new policy that you've instituted, that's great.
Correct.
So where do we, but in addition to that, we were talking about going back and looking at the data.
So how are we working for that?
Figuring out who left this district last year and didn't come back this year. And try to lobby them, send mailers to them, try to influence them, go door to door.
Yeah, we can, we can generate that.
That goes back to commitment, which equals success.
I mean, we, we should.
Yes.
The more you move your child around, the more problems you're going to have.
Exactly, exactly.
We need to get that from Marquet too, to be such a principal.
And that's a message that we need to create to reinforce and everybody needs to explain, yeah.
So to find out when they did their exit interviews.
So who would be in charge, that would be Marquet, wasn't it?
That would be, that would be Dr. Winston and the two chiefs.
Okay.
Cause they supervise principals, so that message was very hard to convey.
That's also a lot of data though, that's a lot of data she needs to crack.
So, so. No, well, but each principal should be able to provide her with dates that they held their exit interviews if anybody left.
Correct.
I, I, I know, but exit interviews only started now, whereas with this data, we can go back even two years back, three years back, yeah.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I'm just talking about this year.
So, so we can pull the data on, uh, all the students who withdrew between this time to that time.
Yeah, and who are now at charter, don't we know their enrollment at charter schools?
Not necessarily.
But sometimes we do.
Sometimes we do.
So when we do?
So we can see if they're in the state system, we can see, the MS coordinator can see where they've gone to another school.
Yeah. Exactly.
So we can match that, we can take that data and then tell the, uh, parent, tell the principals, here is Sheila and she's at this building, right?
Yeah.
Uh, the question would be, uh, here is Sheila, if I moved, I don't have any address or phone number for you.
Sure, sure. Well, let's make it even easier, we don't even need to cross-match it, let's just lure everybody.
So that's what I'm saying, send out mass mailing to everybody in the city.
And, not, not in the city, charter school.
Right. But we need their mailing list, they always ask for our mailing list.
I know, I know, I keep on hearing that, if we give them anything, they have to give us too, because they're supposedly also.
So, but, but also. Yes. We need to get that. We need to get their mailing list.
Uh, subject to sunshine laws and so on, so if that's true, then they should be.
I agree. I need to. Yeah, it would be nice if we had their mailing list and then we could send that out, cause I'm, to send, you're right, to send out a mass mailing, we don't know, we'd see it right.
Yes. Yeah. No, of course.
Oh, you don't want to, because you want kids in a certain age target, it has to be a target list.
Of course, of course.
Yes.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Wouldn't you call that micro targeting or something?
So, so Jill, would you be able to ask that, send out, who would send the letter out to the charters to ask for their, um, like they do for us?
Like Jillian?
They do, they do it just all the time.
Jillian?
Yeah.
Is that you?
Yeah, you have to give it to them.
I can create a letter with Jillian and get it sent out to them.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, so just Jillian will be back this Monday, so.
Let's, let's, yeah, let's please do that.
Maybe that should also go as you're giving them information, reminder letter.
Fantastic. This.
We did this and we'll keep it back.
I've got a few other things, but that's not central.
Yeah, she said, uh, maybe we remind them that we, we provided this to you in the past and now we need this, yeah, yeah.
I'm a double, double. We, I'd send it with the list that you sent, so that there's another reminder, we need this back from you.
Okay.
Provided you what you asked for, now you need to provide it.
Yeah.
And it's gotta be a reasonable amount of time too, we wanna say what that timeframe is and how we want it delivered.
So I, I looked at all of our competition online, the websites that come up the most often of other schools in Dayton. Uh, parochial, virtual charter, regular charter. Uh, so I, I created a certain list and I've looked. They have something that we don't have, some of them. Number one, many of them have a specific landing page. We don't have quite a landing page, we do have a specific, uh, address, enrolldps.com, which goes to the specific page. Could we open that page?
Sure.
So that we can see, so it doesn't go to our main website, but it goes to the specific website that helps enroll the child, which is great. It's great that we have something like that.
Are you talking about enrolldps.com?
Yes, yeah, enrolldps.com.
That just take to the page on the site.
I know, yeah, yes, I've already pre-typed it there, so you could just.
Did I just, just type?
Yeah.
There you go.
There, you can just choose it.
Yeah, so when you go here.
Yeah, once you go here, it just goes to that page, yeah.
Takes you to this page. Right. Right.
Now, this page is a mess, okay? It's very hard to, to find anything. Could we compare that to these pages? For example, let's look at ECOG, then let's look at Summit Academies and so on, let's just open a few of these websites.
It's cool, right?
Yeah.
That's gonna take the place of.
Let's compare how they look. So their, their pages are not only, their pages are not only better in some cases and easier and mobile optimized and so on, they also have a chat function.
Oh.
So you can actually, two of them at least have, where you can click and it seems like they have somebody to chat with during regular business hours, which in some cases, until seven P M.
Sure.
So there's ECOG.
Now, that's a larger network, that's a nationwide, it's a K twelve virtual school, so they have those great resources, but still.
Yeah, if we could hook that up to the call center like we were talking about.
Exactly, exactly, since we have a call center, then somebody could be in charge of that, because I, I don't expect that many people to hit on chat function anyways.
We're, we're looking to change our call center too, so it's one big room.
Yeah.
And then instead of an operator, we actually have a, a system.
A phone tree.
The phone tree, right, where you can press where you wanna go.
Yeah. Okay, and so. So we're waiting for.
Well, here, ECOG's already up, I was pulling, I was pulling you up a second, that's ECOG.
Yeah, so that's, that's ECOG, look at their website.
International women's university. Goes to stay home.
They don't take any, you know, the, the, they don't take any hostages, that's what opens up immediately.
Oh.
This is what they, they're not making you click anything else like we do.
And it's right.
You immediately have this and they ask you all the information.
User friendly. Exactly where to go.
That's it, they, they just wanna grab you immediately, it only takes some time to fill it out and so on.
User friendly.
Let's quickly compare it back to our page.
Uh, did I?
Online student way left, way left, yeah.
Do you have one?
This one, so compare it to our website.
That'd be a big, you're a face to see that.
Yeah, compare it to this.
It's a lot of information.
I don't even know what to click here, honestly, it's so small, there are a bunch of links, I don't understand, what am I supposed to click here?
Right.
It's very confusing, it really is.
And it's at the bottom.
Right.
It's somewhere in the bottom, you have to scroll somewhere, this makes no sense whatsoever.
Yeah, it should be like a big star and a hyperlink or something, right?
Yes, it should be a massive thing, so could we go back to ECOG and then, and then the next site, enroll in Summit?
Yes.
The next site I put in is Summit Academies.
So if you do, yeah, allow, just click on allow, yeah, so they have.
Big enroll, isn't it?
Yeah, big and roll right there.
Big enroll, yeah.
And then you have a few more examples there and they have a chat function, but this just shows that we urgently need to work on that.
Yeah. Yeah. And user fun. And they also had links to Facebook and other social media.
Yes, yeah, oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Well, we do too, I think.
So, so as part of all this, what I wanted to say is, and I, I just need that page if, yeah, if you're done. So I've, I've came up with a couple of campaigns, and that means each campaign needs to have its own landing page, its own unique page that it would be advertised with. And I just wanted to throw them out there and then see whether we could start that creative process, jumpstart it today, and then of course, you guys pick it up from here and.
And we actually talked about my landing pages, not only for the sake of it being easier for the consumer.
Right. Yeah.
But for the sake of us also being able to track that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
It's, it's both.
And, 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 and thank you, by the way, reminding me, could we open that page that you have already opened, the twelve education, yeah, this one? Could we scroll down? So this is a collection of twelve landing pages that are considered to be the best by Instapage, which is quite an authority in this, uh, could you scroll down?
They're going down to where they happened?
Yeah, 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 scroll down, there you go, so. So Oregon State University, for example, you can see their landing page of how they recruit, then let, let's see next pages, and they analyze them, they actually analyze them and show the. What in their professional marketer's opinion, they've done right and what they did wrong.
Okay.
So that's something for us to read and learn as well. Arizona State University, you see they use all kinds of badges, how come we don't put A on state report card? How come we don't put, you know, number one in robotics?
Okay.
How come we don't put, you know, number one or number two in, uh, TV journalism, you know, all that stuff? Uh, Dunbar winning some championship, you know, all, all that kind of stuff. So again, you know, Liberty University.
Famous graduates from, from DPS.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And we have a lot of great.
Some testimonials, they encourage that, to use some testimonials, but you can see that all of these pages have something in common, they're not as busy as ours. And they solicit information immediately on that page, they don't make you click to one more page to go to click on something else. Okay, and so that's very important, so I think this is a very good website to read through, because they do a great job in breaking it down. And explaining why this is a good idea, the way that university did it, of course, is, you know, any criticism and so on, so that's something, and I'll. You know, Jill now has that link, but I'll be happy to share with you, uh, as well later on. So some of the campaigns I, I've came up with, obviously, they're, they're all no, no-brainer, but one should be a specific landing page on the Dayton Virtual Innovation Academy. So that's our newest virtual academy, we should have a specific page just for that, recruiting students. Because this is how, you, you saw ECOG, which has ninety-six of our students, you see how they do it? So, they, they don't, they don't play around, it's just boom, right there, fill it out, become our student, let's get six thousand dollars out of you, okay? So second, DPS has A in value added on state report card, that's another marketing campaign for Facebook and Google and ad, you know? To go with something else, obviously, you know, as part of this whole enrollment. But this is how you get to persuade parents and guardians, that you're trying to transfer them to a district which got an A. So, for the first time in its history. Then DPS has one-to-one computers and technology, that's another thing, a lot of parents like and would like to see. And it shows that we are in line with, you know, the latest trends. Then another one would be DPS preschools have the maximum five stars.
Ratings, yeah.
So again, you know, it's a rating and this is, we have to reinforce that this is rating from state, it's not somebody who just gave it to us. We have to work very hard for it and we got it.
And we've expanded the seat capacity as well.
Oh, fantastic, and we, we could elaborate on all that, we have this many seats.
Seat. Yeah, exactly.
And did you know that if you attended this, you're gonna have much greater success rate in, you know, in the first grade and kindergarten and second grade? You know, you'll pass the third grade reading guarantee and so on. The next one, next squeeze page slash marketing campaign on Facebook, Google, could be DPS offers culturally relevant curriculum and culturally responsive schools. And then it could elaborate on that as well, this is something that we're working on, so, something that we've set up, the Office of Males of Color, that they're working on, so. This is something we can elaborate on. Then another thing, which is very impressive to a lot of people that don't know, early start on college, get your high school diploma and associate degree at the same time.
Yeah, that's a good.
Free.
Mm-hmm.
We have multiple, how many students we have who get that, yeah.
Same, same two years.
College prep class.
At, at, uh.
I just spoke about it at Baptist Street.
Mm-hmm.
I forgot how many at Dunbar, but you have, but they're scattered throughout the, throughout the district, yeah.
Sure, throughout the district, yeah.
But that's where we need to push counselors.
But it's dozens, it's dozens of people.
Yeah, yeah.
That, that also falls into schools, you know, like.
It's great, it's great.
You're eighteen years old.
And you're gonna have.
And you have an associate degree.
In May, you're gonna get your diploma and associate's degree.
Gonna correct. Yeah, and a senior degree.
And, and save your parents twenty thousand dollars.
At a job.
Yes, exactly, exactly.
Yeah.
You're doing this at taxpayers' dime, at our time and effort, so.
Right. And saving your parents X amount of money.
Yeah, after that, you just need another two years and voila, you have the bachelor's.
Right, twenty, you'll be twenty, you'll be great, right.
Sweet.
You know, so this is something that we really need to, a lot of people don't know about it.
Mm-hmm. I do.
And then we can go school by school, do you want STEM? We have Thurgood Marshall for you.
You want arts.
Arts, stivers.
You want arts, exactly.
Stivers and now Westwood, Westwood is good.
One band.
We have stivers and Westwood, and I wrote that down, we have Westwood and stivers for you.
Westwood, we have theater school.
And it could be like that, want arts and music, we have Westwood and stivers for you, something like that.
Mm-hmm. Drumline.
You know, want IT, we have opponents for you, you want sports.
Drumline. Right. Drumline and band is coming back.
Great, but.
There'll be a drumline in every high school.
Let's do, let's do a campaign on that.
And we're starting band coming back.
First time in thirty years or, I don't know, first time in forever, fifty years, yeah.
It's been a long time since they've done any bands here, so we're starting with drumlines and, uh, the Dayton Foundation is supporting us in that effort, so.
Yeah.
The only thing.
Two schools have already started, but all the high schools will have drumlines and then starting in the sixth grade, maybe fifth grade, um, they will be able to start band. So that eventually, it's not just a drumline at the high school, we'll be able to.
Do, go down.
Have a regular marching band.
Hard to know, okay. And then, and then we're also partnering, you're gonna get, the board's gonna get a memorandum of understanding, we're gonna partner with Youth Works, uh, for our kids who are not necessarily college-bound.
Well, yeah, right.
To be able to create, um, job opportunities where they can shadow someone in trades and get their credential before they graduate and be paid.
Yeah.
Yes. Correct.
Fantastic, fantastic.
From a career on the day.
So they, it's another career opportunity, so, cause everybody is not college-bound.
It is.
Yeah, that's right.
It's another marketing campaign, it's another Facebook campaign with its own landing page.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The reason I'm insisting on separate landing pages and separate campaigns is so we can track it. I'm interested in tracking all of that, I want regular reports on all of that, how is it doing, how is that campaign doing?
So.
What can we tweak to improve it? And how much of a success rate do we really have as a result of this? How many heads did we have enrolled?
So, i- if I may, and, and again, I'm absolutely not the marketing expert, but I would also like to see it all combined, like. Look at the, all the, all the great things that are going in DPS with flashes of, you know, here and here and.
Oh, yeah, sure. Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, maybe I'm wrong.
Graduating with a college diploma, new CTE.
Yeah, yes. Yes.
Greater, uh, preschool seats, A plus state report card.
Yeah. Yes.
Just, I mean, a very positive, um.
Yes.
Something with a lot of pop appeal, like wow.
Of course. Absolutely, absolutely, exactly.
That's not the Dayton schools that I do.
This is the right one, I think, yeah.
Yes.
That's not the one that I remember.
Shattering stereotypes, yes, yes.
There you go.
And so another squeeze page, landing page and campaign should be on athletics.
And extracurriculars like the drumline and band.
And then from, yeah, absolutely, and then another one should be on the CTC.
Yeah, correct.
You know.
CTE.
So in that, in that.
CTE, yeah, CTE, CTC, yeah.
CTE, and then that, and that one you can add for those who like, we're gonna try to get the guys who are auto mechanics to be able to get their certificate. And then pay them to work ten hours a week, so you're also gonna get money while you're learning, you'll do, you'll work after school.
Yeah.
And, and really have the experience of working with someone who is experienced and has credential.
Mm-hmm.
So when it's time, you may not be the type of person that can pass in the course exam, but I know how to fix a car.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
And I can pass that test.
And I can make a good living.
And you can make a good living, to help us increase the graduation rate.
Exactly. And, and it'll increase graduation rate, and also we may wanna bring back, we talked about alumni, somebody that graduated and we had talked about the one kid that came out and he could have made eighty thousand dollars.
Yes, we need to tell that kind of story.
You know, to get that, to tell those kind of stories.
Yeah.
On the college credit plus, yeah.
Uh, graduated, right, no, no, that was, uh.
No, this is a guy who just attended our summer special programming course that we did together with SAS Institute last summer.
CTE. Oh, okay.
And then just after one month of attending that and getting certified, he actually passed that test. He was offered a job to make seventy-five thousand dollars, he was just eighteen years old and, uh, no college and so on, and he turned that down. He said, no, I'm gonna go to college and he'd get a pay me more four years later, you know, when I apply, so.
College, it's expensive.
Yeah.
And this is the type of stories, yeah, it is a great story.
What a story, what a story. And everything's about storytelling, it is.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah.
And we have many such great stories, we have a guy right now who's in his second or third, second year at Dartmouth University Full Scholarship. Who was both a Coca-Cola scholar and Gates scholar.
Gates.
And he grew up in absolute poverty with a single mother, and when he was telling us the story, he was crying because his mother was, uh, moving. because his mother was uh moving from one apartment to another every two months, and he was just crying like, mom, could we stop moving? I can't have friends this way and so on, I mean, it's just a very touching story, and this guy became, you know, full scholarship studying bioengineering
Something, it must be, do something in medicine.
or biomedical, something too smart for me, so I don't, yeah, I'm not even trying to repeat that, so it's a it's a very impressive story, yeah.
That's cool.
It's like a story, yeah.
Yeah, it's a very impressive story, so, and so all this leads me to, again, the open enrollment, something I've started from the beginning.
I am kind of going to.
Mad River School District has five hundred sixty-three of our students, so here we are talking about E C O T and ninety-six students, but Mad River has five hundred sixty-three of our students.
That's a building.
Yeah, as as a whole, yeah, exactly, from from Dayton, they're our students.
Yeah.
Northridge has a hundred thirty-four of our students, West Carrollton has thirty-eight of our students, Jefferson Township has twenty students.
So why do we have open enrollment?
And uh, yeah, they have open enrollment, uh these particular jurisdictions, so only five jurisdictions in Montgomery County have open enrollment. And so these are the four, and then there is one more, I think, and I think Hubert Heitz is deciding whether whether or not to do it. So this is something that we need to advertise and so the challenge, both online and offline, a lot of people don't know is that D P S is not just the city of Dayton.
Both Harrison Township and some other zip codes.
Exactly, exactly, we have four other jurisdictions, and we missed that and others take advantage of that.
Oh, somebody, both of them.
We have portion of Jefferson Township, portion of Harrison Township, portion of Trotwood and pro- portion of Riverside.
Trotwood.
So we need to be very mindful of that and include that because everything is about keywords, right? So when they're typing in, when a parent is typing online something or is Facebooking, and they're thinking about enrolling their children some somewhere, and their I P address is in Riverside or Trotwood and it's not in Dayton, Google, Facebook and others would be serving them slightly different content, so we should be including that throughout our website and landing pages. We should be including these keywords like Jefferson Township, Harrison Township, Trotwood, Riverside, and including even zip codes. Include a bunch of zip codes, everything from four, five, four zero two to, I don't know, four or five, whatever it is.
And some of them are partial sets, but we still need to be there to combat this.
Exactly, some of them are partial, exactly, 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 because this is a lot of money that is being drained out of this district and we're not doing anything about it until now, and we urgently need it, so that's um, those were some of my thoughts for today, for this uh for this meeting, and I know that there's a lot of work to do, obviously, this is just barely, we're scratching the surface here. But I'm really hoping that by next week we can have campaigns ready on Facebook and Google, because we have most of the verbiage ready, we can have that and then we can tweak it as we go, this is the advantage of a digital campaign, it's not a billboard, it's not set in stone.
And you can change it, I mean, it's you could evolve it as you go along and you keep checking, no.
We can change it, exactly, exactly, and we'll have to do that, we'll have to do, because we understand, but we're on a short schedule right now.
Yeah.
We have the enrollment process started, so every day that we're not featuring some ads out there is every day that we lose, okay? And so we can't afford that, so next week, by the end of next week, I think we should unleash multiple Facebook and Google campaigns, and we have to decide on the budget for that, but it should be obviously in thousands, it should it should be comparable to the past.
Yeah. And you know, if I can do an interview, just something about new programs.
Yeah, oh, for sure, for sure.
But but the campaigns that um that you aren't ready on Facebook and Googles are for the online academy enrollment and what else?
Yeah. Yeah, for all of those subject, and that means we have to have landing pages for that, I I'm saying for everything.
All Westwood.
Okay.
Not just in, not just online academy, because that's too small, that that's too small of a.
So so the newcomers, and then and the newcomers academy, I haven't had it gotten approved by the board yet, but we wanna start an international newcomers academy, 'cause we have so many immigrants and refugees and and E Ls, and and putting them in one building, giving them extra support.
It's too long of a name, okay, we just call it International Academy, or Globo Academy?
Newcomers. Newcomers.
Newcomers is not, you know, it's it's confusing, what does it mean, newcomers?
Well, I'll come up with something else, I'll, I always just call I N A.
You know, international sounds really good, because everybody understands that we need to have global education and, you know, exposure to languages and so on and cultures.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
So yeah, I I I would think we have to develop landing pages for each one of our high schools, many of our specialized uh elementary and middle schools and feature them all as an independent campaign and an independent landing page, and uh we have most of the materials ready for something like that, so it shouldn't be taking a lot of time to do that, and then uh individual things for the, you know, preschools, one-to-one, A on value added, uh cultural relev- relevant curriculum, early start on college, athletics, C T E, and then having, just like the superintendent said, one landing page that brings it all together, it's just a general enrollment into D P S, so it would be a rehashed, much improved, instead of having what we have right now, having a much better improved page that's borrowing from the best practices.
Like. Like experience the new D P S.
Yeah, the new D P S with all of this, with some nice music and, you know, all this stuff flashing, whether it's using flash technology or whatever, uh just to put it all out there, so.
Or even if it's a uh uh motion graphics where we can do testimonials, and that would be fabulous, and there's so many uses for that.
Yeah, a motion gra- yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly. Yeah.
So you want all of this by next week?
Yeah, by next Friday.
And and then next week.
I I know it's an aggressive timeline, I'm ready to, I I created all this in one night, right, so yesterday night we decided to do this, I went home, this is what I did. I I just scratched the surface, but it's doable, I know it's doable, so.
We understand your urgency.
Thank you, and thanks for taking your time to to come out today, I know it's short notice and.
Yeah, thank you.
Short notice for all this, so I know it's gonna be at a meeting by soon, so.
When you say you guys have most of the materials for this together, who has that and how do we get it?
That's a good question, so we'll have to coordinate all that.
Well, and I can gather some of those things, I think I've sent you some of the items that we had talked about in our first meeting,
Yeah.
um but I can start to get, what kind of, you know, what kind of material are you looking at, you're looking at all the graphics do you want, the information that you want, we can go over that and.
Well, and also the Challenger Center. We created a postcard for the Challenger Center, that's another, we just totally revamped Challenger Center, I've created and.
And and most of it is on our website, if you go to our homepage.
Oh, yeah, I mean.
I'm just saying, 'cause we, we created a post, a mailing for that.
It's right there.
It's all, it's all.
So you're basically grabbing that information and you're just putting it in a nice new wrapper.
It is not coming up, but, you know, I mean, we have, there's the Innovation Center.
Yes, yeah.
They all link to pages, why is uh.
Yeah, and so as long as you click on those pages.
Here's the Challenger Center, here's the report cards, here's the five stars preschools.
It takes you to more.
Right. Right.
Yeah.
There, it it's all there and they all link to different pages, the Innovation Academy has its own page.
I might have to go all that, so what is it that you guys need from us?
Mm-hmm.
Which, you know, it has its own page here with information about it on my, so these are the meetings that we're currently having, which we're about to take that part of it down, of course, so.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. So much of this information is available, online or from us, I guess your job is to create better graphics that's more compelling,
A lot of it's. Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
uh to create those squeeze pages, landing pages, uh and then, you know, improve the text, ours is way too wordy.
Mm-hmm.
You need to do, you know, a better job than we did in just streamlining everything and trimming it.
Yeah. I just, I want to be very careful, and I don't, we can put something together that will work and work well, um with anything like this, when you're moving an aggressive timeline, you wanna make sure you're not creating more problems than you're solving.
Right.
Absolutely.
Um so things like, historically speaking, from projects like this, we have to be careful that
That's.
um there are clear and consistent paths to information, so that if we're creating new, it's obvious how to get there, if I went to the old place
Mm-hmm.
or I went somewhere, I'm not, hey, I I went to that site you told me about, I couldn't find the information, I don't know that wasn't the same.
No, it really needs to be pre-approved before it released, if what's final and live campaign, of course, yeah.
Um and because we didn't build this website, uh nor do we have our access to the architecture, and it's in proprietary architecture,
Mm-hmm.
That's the issue.
Mm-hmm.
um there's some logistical things, and I don't mean that to say that they're
impossible.
possible to do, yeah, it's just, we've gotta make sure that every, hey, who's doing what and did it all get done and be very thorough, because again,
There's barriers.
Mm-hmm.
if what we're communicating is, hey, we are, believe in us, we are competent, we have great new programs, we're doing things, you know, in a way that's better than ever before,
Mm-hmm.
and I send you on this goose chase to, you know, you end up in this place where you're like, well, wait, this is this is worse.
Oh, sure, sure, sure.
So I just wanna make sure that as we're going, we're all on the same page.
But keep in mind, I mean, obviously there's not enough time to change the website, so the website is gonna stay the way it is uh for the next few months while we think of, you know, some other uh strategies, uh the good thing about Facebook and Google campaigns as well, landing pages is they don't really need to incorporate themselves into this website, they're not really dependent on that website.
Uh well, yes and no, 'cause they will have to link to it uh at some point, and we'll need to determine, hey, is this built on a wholly independent architecture?
Yeah, linking, exactly, just linking to it.
Who's hosting that, what U R L, so some of those functional questions, that again, they're not, we're not splitting atoms.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
But again, it's those kinds of things where next, you know, we don't wanna be next Wednesday and, you know, asking those at the eleventh hour and going, oh, wait, I thought you asked for, or you thought we were.
Sure, 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 yeah.
Um so on our end, we'll do our best to do some due diligence and go, hey, here are things we're gonna need decisions made on.
Yes.
Again, they're not big or complicated decisions, but just from a, how do we make sure we're a good host?
No. Oh, some technical logistics, of course, that's why I wanted Upwork to be available, so maybe we can make sure to.
Yeah. Yeah, then I know some of the folks there, they're the best, so.
Yeah, too, so they can talk, so.
Right.
Uh we'll look at that, and certainly we'll be tasked with, um undoubtedly with content and messaging and the core of what's gonna be on that page.
Mm-hmm.
We'll probably need to know, um and maybe this, I don't know if this for you, Larry, or who, but we'll need to talk about, um you know, are we are we building something, encoding that, are we providing graphics to someone else and they're building it and where it lives and all of that stuff? Um fortunately, those are less, they're they're a little more sort of detail issues and less convincing, so.
Yeah. Sure, sure, and those technical issues can be resolved and confident next week, uh uh but in the meantime, maybe the creative part of coming up with compelling messages and graphics could be, we start to work on, you know, today.
Mm-hmm.
Absolutely.
That's that would be, I think, that would be good, and then we wanna make sure that we can track everything, so we'll put Google Analytics into each one of those,
Yeah.
and that's something that Larry, I think, would have to provide you with the the special code from Google Analytics.
Yeah, and we'll have, um there's some other things that we're working on, um adding additional tracking and and um data analytics capabilities to the website
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
through some tools that we have.
Okay.
Uh unfortunately, Mike Blackmead, who's our digital marketing manager, who specializes in paid digital things, uh couldn't join us today, but we'll get him up to speak quickly, uh he was with us for the previous meeting that we had where we discussed some of those things.
Okay, okay.
He'll be heavily involved in, uh less on the creation of the the sort of destination asset, but more on the how do people know about this?
Yes, yeah.
What shows up on Facebook that gets them to click to go there.
Yeah. Yeah, fantastic.
Um and then we can look from there, um what can we get done in a week? What can we get done in two weeks to enhance that, what can we get done in four weeks to enhance that, create something and build.
Exactly, exactly, it's a work in progress, and you know, I personally understand that it it might be very hard to create twenty landing pages in a week, I understand that,
Mm-hmm.
but we can create five, and then another five, and so on.
Just prioritize, and and prioritize with enrollment piece.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly, exactly, because that is urgent, that is urgent, so.
Selling our new program, so people don't. Yeah, and then we move our way back to all the other stuff.
Yeah.
And then you'll come and demo it, and we say, yeah, whatever, and okay, next five, next or ten, or whatever.
Sure.
Exactly. Well, that's, yeah, and Superintendent will
Just wanna make sure you're on the right route.
Right.
Will decide and give you the guideline, and that's it, that's, yeah.
Well, and upbringing, I mean, Sheila upbringing is tall too, man, it's, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Right.
And we'll need to, um the sooner um we can start to coordinate that, those conversations in the.
Sounds good. So Jill, Jill's your main point of contact.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah.
Um again, we.
Jill's your main point of contact.
Okay, we try to be as responsive as we can, uh but we make that promise to all of our clients, so this this little longer heads up, we got.
Okay.
Yeah.
I understand that, I mean.
Well, any longer, please call me, please feel free, you have my number on the card, um you know, so I'd be happy to, you know, discuss anything
Sure.
Likewise, so.
Okay.
whatever issue comes up, and so.
Absolutely.
Especially on one-to-one computers and technology, because that that just has a special little place in my heart.
Hot. It's mom.
We'll put your picture in the.
Yeah.
Put his picture right there.
And there's a nice video that was shot on that, that would be nice for people to see when we're advertising that one-on-one, yeah, nicely, with testimonials, yeah.
Yes, yeah, yeah, it was nice, yeah. Yeah. Update it. Yeah, yeah.
There's even, there's a picture when we were at camp with Senator Lainer. Watch the kids.
Yeah, and they're doing, they're doing such a great job there, camp.
Yeah. Yeah, oh, yes.
Yeah, they're great, okay, so, yeah, okay, all right, so we all have a lot to do, we all have a lot of
Mm-hmm, it's a personal. Yes, it does. I know, I go, I need to, make sure that's going, so.
questions to answer and some more things to follow up on and uh.
One thing, um too, that I would love to, and I don't know if, I'll I'll lean on you guys a little bit to let me know how the the best tactical way to execute this is, but certainly this is a very tactical conversation, we've got something we want, you know, we're trying to drive enrollment, we need to get some actions put in place as quickly as possible.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Those are important conversations, certainly with important outcomes attached, um we also want to make sure we're having strategic conversations
Absolutely. Right.
uh and beginning those, and so it's not to say, hey, we can't, you know, we we need to not abandon looking on the horizon for what's right in front of the car.
That's true, absolutely.
Um so in terms of best way to facilitate those conversations, we really wanna talk not only to board members, but to stakeholders um across the district, um whether that's active parents, you know, some of the groups you mentioned, um
Sure.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
And media understanding, hey, what are shared priorities, where are differences, what are our strengths and weaknesses?
Yeah. Yeah.
And as we begin to look strategically down the road and at bigger messaging platforms and broader things, um starting to begin that process as well.
Absolutely. That makes sense. And and we should make sure that you guys are part of all these summits and so on, that.
Oh, we definitely.
The more we know, you can't send us enough, include us in anything, and it it it's just keeps us right and safe and where we're at.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Just, yeah. No, you you have to, you have to attend all those, yeah, just keep in mind that, like for every business, you know, businesses depend on clients, well, our clients are students,
And Jill, Jill appreciate all this, they're. Exactly, and our families.
So enrollment is everything.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
And if.
We do a lot in education, we.
Yeah, yeah, so everything is driven by that, that's our strategy, really, you know, that's our number one thing, everything else is secondary, you know.
Yeah, I know you. I'll get that. All right.
We we like to have lots of answers, but it's more important that we ask the questions and ask them of a lot of people, rather than pretend that we're know-it-alls, so.
I'll get on.
Mm-hmm.
None of us are, but if we work together, we can figure it out.
Absolutely, well, if we ask, we ask the clients and the customers, they have all the answers we'll ever need, so.
Ask the right questions. Yep, all right.
Well, Superintendent has all the answers, she's, that's why she's superintendent, you know, that's.
I don't. No, I don't, you don't. But together we do.
All right.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.